Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Today is June the 13th, 2022, and this is our regular monthly meeting. So we welcome everyone here tonight. We've got an exciting night's agenda ahead of us. So we're happy to see all the some new faces and some that we know right the way of it. We welcome everyone. We always lead off with our prayer and our pledge. And so we'll go ahead and have Commissioner Walpert lead us in the prayer and Commissioner Ellis lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heaven, Father, this day and all you blessings, dear Lord, we just thank you for another opportunity to gather, dear Lord, and to conduct the people's business. And I just pray, dear Lord, that you give us wisdom and insight and guidance in all that we do and say, dear Lord, I just pray that what we do would always be pleasing in your sight, dear Lord. And I just pray you bless the people in McDowell County, dear Lord, bless our nation. Dear God, may we just be a nation once again that as we say in our pledge under God, dear Lord, I just pray that we'd see a movement, dear Lord, of the Lord in our nation, in our state, in our county. Dear Lord, watch over us, keep us safe, dear Lord, protect their troops. And dear Lord, we thank you for all you many blessings. And we thank you for your son, Jesus, who died on the cross for our sins and rose three days later. We love you in your name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your motion, we approve the minutes.
My question, we approve the minutes. Ask for the Senate.
Motion in the Senate. Discussion. All the papers say aye. Here are the motions, we approve the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Siegel, can I be here tonight? So we'll ask if that'd be stricken and added to July's agenda.
Okay.
I'll send the bills.
Yes, you had an email that was sent from the Sheriff's Office about a vest purchase.
So we're adding that to the deal.
And add the items. Yes, sir.
Okay. We got a motion in a second on that. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. Any vote. Okay. First on the agenda tonight is item A. We've got a special guest here tonight, Miss Stephanie Foll, and we welcome her tonight. And we're going to let Mr. Garrett come up and introduce her.
So Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Walker, members of the Commission, Mr. Wood. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening and honor an outstanding teacher and one that we've known has been outstanding for a long time, but the word is out, not only across the state, but southeast and the nation. So Stephanie Foll, PE health and coach extraordinaire at West McDowell Middle School. She was recently named the North Carolina SHAPE, which is a PE organization's state middle grades teacher of the year. She went on then to compete at the sectional level, district level, which included basically all of the southeast and a lot of eastern seaboard. She brought that title home as well and was one of three finalists for the national SHAPE teacher of the year. Coach Foll is an actually board certified, successful soccer and track coach. One of the things that I like to say as we got to go out to New Orleans, Mr. Carson and I, and apologies, he meant to be here, but he actually could use your prayers. His father is in the emergency room at the Navy Hospital, so he's taking care of taking care of family business, obviously. And he sends his greetings as well. But Mr. Carson and I had a chance to go to New Orleans and see all of the things that Coach Foll had been able to do leading up to him, a lot of professional development, a lot of leadership things that she's had an opportunity to be part of as part of SHAPE. So this award is obviously well deserved, but the best part is the day-to-day impact that Coach Foll has on our kids here in McDowell County. My daughters have had her, my own oldest played soccer for her and also ran track. And certainly she has had impact not only at my household, but hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of households across McDowell County for several years now. So Coach Foll, if you'll jump up here and be recognized. Also, as fate would have it, Coach Foll is repeating at the state level. She was recently named the NC SHAPE middle grades health educator of the year for the current year. So she's going back-to-back with state awards. Also, Michael Cafaroso is the NC SHAPE middle grades teacher of the year. And Mr. Carson is the administrator of the year in support of health and PE education. So lots of great things happening in physical education, health, all across our school district. And Coach Foll has had a huge part in that organization locally, district, state, regional, national. So congratulations, Coach, for serving the county.
We welcome you here tonight. Matter of fact, I'm interested to tell you all together, her father involved, and I grew up together. We were still are friends and good friends, and we used to play a lot of sports together growing up. Anyway, it's an honor to have you here with us tonight. And we have a certificate we want to present to you in the McDowell County Board of Commissioners, certificate of recognition awarded to Stephanie Foll in special recognition of being named the 2022 SHAPE Southern District Teacher of the Year, Middle School Physical Education. And we'd like to come up and present this to you. More good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Amazing.
Thank you.
I'm going to do what I do best and keep it short and sweet. I just want to thank everybody for your support this past year, especially my superintendent and my administration. They have been phenomenal. You know, when COVID pandemic hit, my biggest thing was to research and find new ways of getting stuff out there for us, find new CUs for our health PE teachers. And one of the things I told my cohorts is my biggest thing was to advocate for our field and for our students. And so that's why I went on a big old kick and found different ways to bring resources to our county, went out there and started stepping out as a leader, which most people know me, I don't really step out my shell very much. But I would try new things and I just had a fantastic year of just learning and growing, not only, you know, within my district, but just overall professionally. And I just, I truly appreciate, appreciate this. So thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett is, over time, as this board, he has worked with the MDCs, he's certainly become someone special to us. And I speak for the whole board when I say that. And we have enjoyed the opportunity to work with Mr. Garrett. And we certainly hate to see him go. He, you know, he did not just assume that he became a friend to us. And we cherish that thought and always will. And he will always be a friend of us. And we appreciate all the hard work that you've done. And I'll quit rambling, but some people, I know everyone wants you to say something, but.
One thing about Mark, how many of y'all have ever been in the fishing forest since they, you might have been over there? Well, I think he's a Tennessee guy. And one thing I think is really Mark in McDowell County, he came from a county sort of similar to McDowell County, and he knew the people over there because, hey, he's one of us. And so Mark, it's been truly an honor to work with you on the Joint Education Committee. And also, you know, you're on McDowell Tech Board this season, and I more appreciate your service on that board, too. And as Chairman said, you'll be greatly missed. And we sure would love to see you stay, but we understand the situation. And we're glad to see you look forward in your career. And we're always here, if you ever do want to come back to McDowell County, we're not the school board, but definitely we would advocate on your behalf. So thank you, Mark, for being a friend. Thank you for your excellent leadership in the McDowell County school system. You've done a tremendous job. Thanks again.
Mark, I had the pleasure of being on the board when you came to county.
And partially to blame for me being your superintendent.
Partially blamed, but I want to thank you for becoming immersed in our community and being one of us. It took a lot of your time away from your family, and I do know that your family means the most to you than anything. So it is truly amazing where we were when you became superintendent. And I can remember a quote, Mr. Ellis, if we can't do any better in two years, you need to get rid of us. And you did. And you kept your word. You were open book. I would like to ask, if you would, to let the school board know exactly what they can do better, you know, in finding a good superintendent for our county so that we can continue to grow.
Stay away from Tennesseans.
I just, I'm going to tell you, you have become a friend to just about everybody. But I do want to wish you the very best of luck.
You said something about, you know, until somebody found out about her, somebody found out about you, and I'd like to know who left to get out of here and stay here. But I appreciate everything you've done. You brought schools back, and you brought our school system and count our children through so many plans that they've never been faced before. And you did it without letting them hide. You did it out in the open, everybody. And I appreciate what you have done for the county, for the students. You brought our school's home. Our two-year-old grandson is going to go to Cleveland next year. He'll almost be three. And that's, to me, that's just amazing. So I appreciate everything you did to advance the children in our county and give what they can experience prior to being an adult and then having to learn it. Thank you so much.
And if I may share a little information, he'll be able to go $50 cheaper next year because we got a big grant to help offset some of the costs for the Part Day 3K.
That's good.
That's hot news on our agenda tonight.
Mark, I appreciate your friendship first and appreciate your service to the county, appreciate your service to the kids in this community, and the growth of the school system since you've been our superintendent. I hate to see you go, but I wish you the very best.
Oh, before we come out, Mark, we've got a little presentation for you, but I'll offer you the podium and give up a cigarette. You don't ever give a superintendent an open mic. Mr. David Verlison taught me that when I was a high school principal. You know, when I got the agenda the other day, I did not expect item B to be on the agenda, but I figured fussing was futile. And we really appreciate you all recognizing really the hard work of the entire district and really the people that we serve with every day. You know, I talk a lot about fit and being the right fit and being able to, I think, understand the community and enculturate yourself into that community and to try to seek first to understand and then do a lot of listening. Hopefully, I've done that. I hope that when I walk away from here, people understand it's not because I don't love it here. I absolutely love it here. There was just an unexpected opportunity that came up that I really sort of rebuffed a little bit, and then they came up again. And it's just one of those things that the timing and everything is just meant to be. And I appreciate all the support I've had here. We've built a lot of bridges. We've formed a lot of collaborations, true collaboration, not just on paper. And we've worked for the greater good. And you know, as I was saying earlier, if I walk away here, I hope folks will say, he fought for kids. He fought for, he fought for kids. And I say a lot of times, student needs over adult conveniences. And if you do what's right for kids, it'll be what's right for the rest of us. And I promise you that. That's my challenge as you all move forward as a board. That's my challenge to our school boards as they move forward. You need to get better than me. That's what your goals should be every time, is to get somebody much better than I have been able to do for you. But nine years ago is in a flash. I cannot believe that nine years ago is when Mr. Ellis and some of his colleagues tapped me to take the reins and see what would happen. I have, it's been no greater joy than the arms of mine. So thank you for everything and really the entire community.
We've got a certificate of appreciation, McDowell County Board of Commissioners, certificate of appreciation awarded to Superintendent Mark Garrett for his extraordinary service to McDowell County schools by leading the schools at their highest graduation rates, lowest dropout rates, lowest teacher turnover rates in district history, and exceptional academic growth.
That makes me sound decent. I like that. And since it's in writing, I'm trying to get my wife to believe that now, right? Thank you. And I apologize for leaving, but we're up at six o'clock, so come this when you get done.
So while we're in the sitting for recognition, we've got another one we're going to recognize tonight, Mr. Terry DePorch. Terry, if you would come up to the podium and your family.
This is a nice podium.
Well, I'd like to start off by saying, again, Terry is another person that has been a colleague that we've worked with for many years now. And we have grown to be friends, and I cherish that friendship, Terry. I consider you a good friend, and I cherish that. Really hate to see you hang the bridle on the barn door and quit plowing, but we appreciate all the hard work that you've done. We have loaded a lot of things on you. You just keep bearing them and carrying them, but we certainly appreciate all the years of service that you put in McDowell County. And McDowell County is certainly a better place for the efforts that you have shown. And Terry, how many years have you been a county board now?
Twenty twenty-seven. I'm hearing twenty-seven in the background. And I had a year, over a year in sick leave accumulated, so.
Y'all, some of the best time, you know, I was speaking on a personal level here. We have our county Christmas party. Terry, a lot of years was entertainment at our county Christmas party. This guy's got acting, comedian skills that you would not believe. And Terry, I know the many years you rode around in the red expedition, you know, your country car, so to speak.
That was a drug seizure vehicle.
We're direct to McDowell County, right? You ride around a drug seizure vehicle. But anyway, Terry, you know, I know you love Tennessee, and you're a big Bulls fan. And I know you're working at that camp or a field goal and rolling down the road. And I just want to say to you and your family, thank you for many of your dad, grandpa, husband, sir, McDowell County. And Terry, best wishes to you. And you've always got friends around this table right here. And thank you for what you've done for McDowell County. It's not going unnoticed. Thanks.
I would like to say, a year ago, this past December, you took Chris and I around a couple of days and showed us a lot of the different properties that McDowell County has. And I was lost as a commissioner. I didn't know what to, what to do, what to say, but you kept saying, you need anything, slip me up. You need anything, slip me up. And I think you're that way with everybody. And I know that the job that you've done here, you've always tried to make sure you have met the expectation of your customer, whomever that was. And amazing employee. And we're going to definitely miss you in a big way, but we hope that you enjoy your retirement.
You know, when I retired one time, or quit, because of Mr. Fegg, you looked at me and he said, you know, lightning strikes twice sometimes in the same spot. So if you get tired of loafing, I bet you we can find you another one. We will miss you, Terry. You've been on a lot of hats over those twenty-seven years, for sure. And you'll, you'll be missed for a long time. So just, you know, enjoy it. Enjoy.
Congratulations, Terry. And appreciate your friendship and your service to the county. Like they said, somebody had you worn is incredible. But I appreciate your service, and you will be missed. So thank you.
If you'll allow me, Mr. Chairman, I would like to say thank you.
You have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Madam Clerk, Mr. County Manager. I have, I have seen about fifteen election terms and county commissioners go by. Over three hundred meetings, two wonderful clerks to the board, and two outstanding county managers. I've seen the interns that have come through, that went through our organization and have become county managers. I see interns now that will be our leaders of tomorrow. But I couldn't have done anything by myself. It's the whole group behind me, not just family, but coworkers every day, citizens of the county, department heads, our coworkers. It's a huge organization, a team effort. We can't do it by ourselves, never could. But with everyday action, I've enjoyed working not only for you, but working with you every day. And for that, I am truly grateful. Thank you so much.
We are certainly grateful as well. We've got a certificate for you, McDowell County Board of Commissioners, certificate of appreciation awarded to Terry DePorch for his many years of dedicated service to the McDowell County organization. We'd like to present this to you, Terry.
Appreciate you. Thank you. It's your family.
Yeah, bring them up here.
Yeah, get one by yourself first as you move on. All right, are you ready? Okay, go ahead. Okay, wait a minute.
Are you cheating me right there?
It's not prison food.
Thank you.
and recognize.
So most of these are even some that I didn't know what they're about then to come. I just simply set out the names, and this is what happens. Pamela Forchy, which was administrative assistant, went on to the shooting range. Theresa McCurry, administrative assistant. Brittany Wright, animal shelter services manager. Stacy Kate, facility maintenance. Brandon, sorry, I'm a nervous rabbit. Brandon Wilson, facility maintenance. Pam Vance, wastewater manager. Kay Lewis, facility maintenance. Cody Bishop, thinking, Negro Water System. And then back here is one of our citizens, Mr. Martin Watkins, from the Hankins community that means the world to us. So thank you.
to NC GS 159, Mr. Wood, turn it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several weeks ago, you represented the recommended budget for fiscal year 2023. You've had a time to look at it and ask questions. The budget's also been made available to the public for review. And North Carolina General Statute, 159, requires that you now hold a public hearing, which has been duly advertised, to receive public comment on the budget. So the public now has the opportunity to make comments on the budget. It's not a Q and A unless you would like it to be, but if they want to comment now is the time.
Any comments from the audience? Anything from the divisions?
Much gratitude, yeah.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any comment? All the papers say aye? Okay. Okay, what's the board?
I want to bring up one item, which is the mission line. And I think Mr. Alston serves on that board, and we've had some conversations about what's going on. So we've got excellent groups within our county, so many worthy groups that would greatly benefit from funding. So one thing I want to talk about, and I know this is just discussion on the budget item, but we've got, we've got $17,000 allocated to that group per year. The city is $5,000 per year currently to that group. So I'm going to go ahead and change the funding level, and this is for discussion. And of course, when it's time to act on the budget, there's a motion, we'll make this motion, or we'd like to say it's included. So 5,000 be retained, there's 17,000, then another, another group, and it's in the request we've got, Mr. Whitten gave us, the Mill Creek project. Right now, they've got a request for $1,000 to help keep that creek clean. And it's probably our commitment, they're looking for either 500 to $1,000. Is that correct, Mr. Whitten?
That's right.
So I, you know, I would like to see us take 1,000 and add to that because a lot of people benefit from that creek up there, and they total them out, the tonnage of trash they take out just with that system being installed in short time. And then the Freedom Life Ministry does a tremendous job. You know, we all see every day, one thing as commissioner, and I know y'all get it, too. People say, what can we do about homelessness and people who are on addiction, who are walking everywhere around our county and committing crimes because they need money to buy more drugs? So Danny Hammond's group is doing an excellent job there. And I would like to see us take another 5,000 out of 17 and allocate to his group as we move forward. He, I think, receives currently, how much, Mr. Whitten, Freedom Life Ministry's?
Seven thousand, roughly.
Seven thousand, Mr. Whitten.
Okay, and take it to 12. And the McDowell Pregnancy Center does an excellent job, too. And I would like to see us take the remaining amount and. and make that a standing commitment moving forward. So that's just discussion because you're not, we're not eliminating funding for the mission. We're just reducing the amount to spread it to more people and hopefully.
What was you reducing it by?
So 17 is what they've got now. Take away five, leave five, which is what the city is currently doing. And then five to the Freedom Life. And then the 1,000 a year to the upon submission of invoices to keep that creek clean up there. And then the remainder, we'd do 10, 6,000 going to the McDowell Pregnancy Center. But that's just for discussion. I just wanted, that's one thing I want to see. Whatever date we do officially move, and there's a motion made on that budget.
Any other discussion from the board members?
One thing that's been brought to my attention is the premiums for the county employees, specifically the ones that were on the older plans with the premiums increasing substantially. Has there been any more discussion with insurance about that?
We looked into that and there's no way to do a carve out specifically for the, I think there were about seven folks that were affected by that at this point. So you could either do all or nothing as far as any family plan changes.
Is there any way to help the employees that will?
No, you either have to change the premium completely, and that's really your only option. You can't do other offsets as far as special contributions or offsets for that. Good ask.
Be considered as wages, wage increase and stuff like that? Is that the reason why?
Right, you would have to do compensation to offset. You're not allowed to make health savings, contributions, that sort of thing for limited classes.
Any other discussion?
In the notes, on the lowering the rate for Long Town District from 15 cents to 12 cents, when the budget is approved, just wanted to point that out too, to make sure that that does match so that it does go in with those people in that part of the county. And also, when we voted for the budget, we did get the annual budget presented. And staff is working on a three-year budget of what we asked for and voted on back earlier this year. So, and from that perspective, from my recommendation, I'm asking staff to go with like a 4% increase. Last year was a 3.5% prior to this year. This year was a pretty big one. But if there are other percentages that you all would want to see, I think that, to be fair, I think we need to try to see that. And also, in the two-year or three-year budget of what they're working on, the capital plan that we got in there too, to look at, H E A C systems are going to be going out, have that budgeted. Also, as he is working on, as the staff is working on, positions that have been asked for, that have been denied, those would be worked into the budget as well. So those would be something that would be good prior to having a vote.
I want to talk about all those positions. There were seven of them.
There were seven positions. There was, yes, to answer your question, two. And I guess this would be the time to talk you out of it. The sheriff had asked for two positions. And from my understanding and talking with the sheriff, full amount for his two positions, he would be getting out of the jail funds, the jail revenue, for one year. And from that perspective, I am in support of giving him those two positions. The other five positions are to be budgeted out in future years.
And you said, I was under the impression for two years.
It is in the, Ricky is stating that he's going to be getting more. But to be clear, on the first year, 100% is going to be funded by the jail revenue. It is, he has it higher than that. Yes. You are correct.
Okay.
But on those two positions. But to be clear, for the budget reason, the seven that was brought up, the two, I am interested in supporting that with Ricky's support of the 100%.
Because of the revenue.
Because of the revenue coming from the jail. That's correct. But then the five positions that were not approved, then he would be working those into the 24 or 25 schedule.
Fourth thing, one more thing to make sure I'm right. If he can do it on those other five, because.
If he can do it. That's correct. If he can do it. That's correct.
I didn't want to lock him in to saying tonight that regardless of if the shift.
And to be clear, this is a planning document that says it's binding anybody. It's just helping to understand.
The future planning. And again, the 12-month budget, when we approve that, that's our target. That's our goal. That's what we've got to work within. The two-year, three-year, four, you know, when we decide to go farther out, those are going to be planning years so that we have a better understanding.
So basically, the planning document is what you're talking about?
That is correct. But it is in the budget. It is the budget for a two-year, a three-year budget. That's correct. So, but that, that is correct.
But things could change. Might necessitate requiring him to do something different.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Gotcha.
He also indicated to me that, you know, if possible at all, he would look more of the jail revenue into this.
Yes, he is going to be. In our communications with the sheriff, they will be looking at that next year with the marshals and going to be discussing potential changes. And at that point, possibly changing the percentage to come to our general fund, which will be very helpful. And I'm very excited about that due to our general fund level.
Mr. Woodton?
With the changes being discussed, would you like Ms. Bell and I to take those and incorporate them into the ordinance and bring this back next Monday?
Absolutely.
Consideration?
Absolutely.
Sound good.
We're all in agreement on that. So we'll just look at it again on Monday.
That's right.
Okay.
Can I ask if we can get a copy of that before Monday so we can review it? So then we can discuss it on Monday in case we want to go ahead and duck.
We'll send that out by Wednesday like we would do a normal meeting.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? If not, we'll move on to, I'd need library update. We have Mr. Marlon Bruthon here with us tonight. Marlon, go ahead and podium, sir.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this chance to talk with you and share some of the updates about how the library can serve in the community. I gave you a packet of information, a lot of it. One should be like this statistics sheet. And just go over some of the highlights of it. So between July and May of this current fiscal year, the library welcomed 85,000 children, teens and adults into our buildings. And while they were there, they checked out a lot of books, over 130,000 picture books, how-to manuals and murder mysteries, all the good stuff. And they also asked us a lot of questions, over 10,000 questions about their ancestry, about, let's see, how to apply for a job online or how to use one of our computers. And we've been happy to help each time. What's not on the sheet is our bookmobile. It's finally on the road this spring. We really got it going just about everywhere. Jason Davis, he's one of our new hires. And he's done a great job of connecting with community organizations and trying to show up at festivals. I think we've been to every festival except for the Livermore Festival. Can't imagine why, but yeah. So there's that. And we also are trying to reach all four corners of the county. And so him and his co-pilot, Megan Martin, they've been doing such a great job of connecting these families with reading and county resources. So they've done really well. It's also great just to see how quickly the services are going. Again, already we're having families meet us at these book stops. So within just a few short weeks, I'm really proud of them. And also, always like to remind people that while the bookmobile does have a lot to offer for children, there's a lot of stuff for teens and adults. We have large print titles, we have those New York Times bestsellers, you know, DVDs, audiobooks, teen fiction. And it really is like a small mobile library. It has Wi-Fi when possible, computers, a printer and scanner. So it's really great to be able to provide this service really across the entire county. So it's really, we could have done it without your support and the support from the state library. So I'm really excited about that part. Now coming up, or actually just started, our annual summer reading program. This past Saturday, we had this huge kickoff over at the YMCA's pavilion. And we had over 80 kids and their families come by to check us out, learn more about summer reading. Theme this year is Oceans of Possibilities. It's a perfect theme that helps the public library highlight how reading opens up possibilities to everyone at all stages and all walks of life. The programs that Megan Martin and Danielle Tilson have created, they're free, they're fun, they're educational, and they're open to anyone who wants to participate. The ladies have set up a modest goal of having 100 kids read or be read to you for eight hours over the summer. So since the program ends on August 6th, families have eight weeks to do this. So I feel that eight hours is pretty doable. And honestly, we're a reading community. So I feel really confident we're going to really surpass those numbers. But what would help is if you mentioned the summer reading program to your friends, your families, to anyone you think might be interested in participating. Because summer reading program is really important to us. It's fun for us. We get to talk books with kids and families. And we have a lot of fun doing this. But one of the things we're trying to address with this program is that summer learning loss. So kids can lose up to three months of literacy skills over that summer if they don't do anything related to education or reading. But they read just a little bit, just a few minutes each day, then that's prevented. So I think our overall goal is to make sure that when these kids start school next year, that they're going to start right where they need to be and ready to learn. So again, I sent you like a lot of papers to look through, stacks of information on the programs we're offering, how the summer reading program works for children, teens as well as adults. And the people and the community who have helped support us by sponsoring some really great prizes and reading incentives. Because we have some kids who'll read like 1,000 books without breaking a sweat. And those can be those kids who just need some sort of prize at the end. So we're grateful for their support.
Marlon, a quick question before we act. I was looking at the sponsors while you were talking. You've got some pretty big sponsors to find. And Hickory, I mean, kids love trampoline cars. The Catawba Science Center, that's a big deal. Kid Senses down there in Red Bull. And the game store. And then you've got your local guys like Paul Baker and Bruce's Family Feeds. These others that are not located here in Marion. I think you've done good to try to attract something that kids like to do, to be a sponsor to what you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, and I wish I could take any of that credit. But again, Megan and Danielle have done a really great job of spreading that net wide and just reaching out to anybody. So I'm really proud of their work. So that's pretty much it for the updates. And concerning the memos turned in, the library is really proud to be part of a federal brand where we were awarded money to purchase 10 laptops, 10 Chromebooks and 10 hotspots. So the plan is to lend them out like someone can check out a book. But for these, the slight difference is that these can only be lent out to adults that are McDowell County residents. And so, actually, just because I'm really proud of it, I brought one for show and tell. And then I'm happy to pass it around if you want. But with that came some questions about how much should we charge if something's late? Or how much would we charge if something is damaged, lost or stolen? And so that's where we need your approval or any edits that you suggest on our proposed fee structure that I said you want. Do you have any questions about it?
No, I don't.
I think it's pretty impressive that most times somebody comes in here regarding fees and wants to raise them, but you're actually lowering the fee for DVDs that are returned late. I read that and I said, "Is that a typo?" And I said, "No, they're actually lowering the fee." I said, "So way to go, library."
We'll make up for it later.
We have, there's that other memo asking about the DVDs. Just goes, "They are getting cheaper than the books themselves." And so it felt appropriate to ask as well.
Well, that's good. You're looking, I mean, you're going with the trend and you're reducing the amount of possible late fees because the trends lower, they're going more fast.
On hotspot laptops and Chromebooks, let's say county resident comes in and does not have a library card and proves they're a resident, and they want to go ahead and rent one of these out. They can actually get it for the actual cost or have it with $80 with insurance. Is that my mistake?
Yeah, when they, if they were to lose it, typically like when someone loses a book or DVD, we charge them the cost of replacement with the full cost that we paid for it. But with the insurance, we have the option of instead of charging $400, we can charge $80. Because with the $400, people never see that page again.
That's correct.
$80 is the better chance that we can work something out, pay it down, and still have them come and still use the library.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to accept the rates as presented.
Second.
Okay, can the motion be second? Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Marlon.
Yeah.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, out of left, comprehensive land use plan, which is, we need to go into a public hearing. NCGS 160D-601, so we'll have a public hearing. Mr. Harmon, would you like to come forward?
Mr. Chairman, this comprehensive land use plan update is the final piece of our 160D update being compliance with the general statute change. We ask that barring any comments, that this be adopted tonight. And then we'll have to update it again every 10 years.
If all of them answer the cable, it's clear to the board.
I would ask for any public comments.
Does anybody in the public have anything to say concerning this? If not, motion be upheld.
Second.
Motion second. All the papers say aye?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, motion approved, the comprehensive land use plan as presented.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, thank you, Harmon. Next, is the Lake James update while you're.
Can I stay here? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to update you on the Lake James Protection Ordinance and the activities around the lake since our adoption of the 2020 Lake James Protection Ordinance. Activity, as you can imagine, has been very brisk. And staff has issued quite a few violations over the last six months. Since January, we have seven violations that we have issued and working to get those rectified. They range from working without a permit to clearing in the buffer. Planning Assistant Catherine Ladner, who was supposed to be here and not have something else to be at, spends about two days a week working on Lake James issues. She is now the face that meets with developers and contractors. She issues the permits. And then, of course, I'm there if needed, or I still like to tag along once in a while just to get outside. I'd like to ask, general statute allows us to charge up to $500 per violation. Staff would like to see that cap at five hundred and just say that five hundred dollars is your violation whether you're working without a permit or whether you cleared in the buffer. And that's per occurrence, that means if you cut down two trees, that's a thousand dollars. So we'd like to ask that the board consider that. Also like to ask that the board allow us to put wording in the ordinance that prohibits septic systems from being put in the buffer. That sounds like that should be fairly common sense, but we've had issues with that. So we would like to inherently put that in the ordinance that no portion of the septic system, a lot of people are saying, but it's a repaired area, we'll never use it. And then it fails tomorrow and you've got to clear the buffer. So we'd like to put that wording in there. And we'd also like to put some wording in there that inherently prohibits vehicles within seventy-five feet of the water. We have folks that will go down there and take an ATV or a golf cart or something to, they will access the boat dock. And we would like to be able to say, more than seventy-five, seventy-five feet from the water, you cannot have any vehicular traffic. The other thing is make sure that we put wording in there that says you're only allowed to have one access path to the water. We have instances where a logging road is on a lot, somebody will put a mulch on that and they'll go to the other side and build another path. And we'd like to be able to say you can have one access path to the lake. If you've got an existing logging road, then you have to close it up with mulch or plant over it if you want to put something else on it. But you can only have one pathway to the lake that is four feet wide. And we'd like to be able to come to you when we see issues that we think should be added to the ordinance to update the ordinance. Because we do believe that it is a living, breathing document that is constantly evolving as growth continues.
And I'd like to add also, you know, it is the homeowner and the builder's responsibility to find out what the ordinances are here in this county. And when there's infractions on those ordinances, it's no one's fault but the builders and the homeowners. It behooves them to see what the rules and regulations are before construction has ever started. So I certainly agree with what you're saying.
We went through a two permit process. You get a minor permit, you're into the boat dock, and then a major permit for everything else. That has really helped us be able to get out in front of contractors, builders, everybody. Because now you're required to submit a plat that shows your setbacks, should be set, what you're gonna be. Gives us the amount of impervious surface you're gonna have on the lot. So we have our ducks in a row before we issue a permit. But then again, you always have a couple instances where you've got people that work without a permit or oops, accidentally cleared too much. So we think that that five hundred dollar fine may help in deterring some of these issues.
Mr. Harmon, are these recommended changes consistent, since we share the lake with Burke County, consistent to what they're doing down there?
Yes, sir. We stay in communication with Burke quite often to find out what they're doing and the issues they face. And like you said, we admire what's on in Burke.
And the fines in the past have been up to five hundred dollars and what you're recommending is going to a flat?
Five hundred? Yes, sir.
Per occurrence?
Yes, sir.
So if you like what you're hearing, it is preferable to send through the planning board just to have them.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and as our county managers directing to the board, to the board, to go ahead and refer this back to the planning board for review and then send back for approval.
Second.
Got a motion seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Harmon, would you just bring the documents back to us and?
Be happy to.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Trying to introduce Joe.
I'd like to introduce Joanne Deo to Lake James Environmental. They have been doing some great work in helping us and keeping us informed. And she'd like to do a little update on what Lake James Environmental is doing.
Okay.
Thank you. You see me sitting here every month, I let you know I can talk. And I know when I sit out here, I always think I'd love to see any PowerPoint presentations, so I have given some copies to Mr. Silver so folks here can see it as well. So my name is Joanne Deo and I'm on the board of Lake James Environmental Association. And I know your schedule was pretty lengthy today, so I'm gonna try and keep this compressed as much as possible. So who am I? Obviously, I'm not a local based off of how I talk, but I moved here and live on Lake James. Moved here three years ago to this beautiful county. And originally, I was a research scientist and then I spent almost thirty years at Regeneron Pharmaceuticals, retired as an executive there. And that's kind of the caliber of the people who sit on the board of Lake James Environmental. It's an amazing group of folks. And the board is made up of environmental scientists, finance people, corporate executives, and people who just care about Lake James and the watershed. I absolutely love this area and everything it has to offer. And after being here for a year, that's all it took for me after retirement to get Nancy, I knew I wanted to give back to the community. And I knew I wanted to select an organization that really meant a lot to the science that I am so fond of, but also the community at large. And when I heard about Lake James Environmental and heard a presentation, I just knew that was the place I wanted to be. And that's why I'm excited really to talk to you about this today. So let's, I'm gonna go to the next page on your slides. Just a quick agenda, again, quick, we're gonna introduce the organization, talk a bit about the watershed. Talk about some of the activities that Lake James Environmental has been involved in and the trash trout that's on Mill Creek that you talked about, thank you very much. And some offers and requests from both, for offers from us, requests for you guys. So on the next slide, Lake James Environmental, we've been around for forty-nine years. So it was founded in seventy-three, nonprofit, all volunteers except for one part-time executive director. So all the work that we're doing is done with volunteer work, working board, but also community members who really care about the watershed itself. I'm not gonna redo all of the values, but our mission is what's really important. We're really here to protect and enhance the long-term environmental health and natural beauty of the Lake James watershed. When I first came here, it didn't say long-term. That word was missing. And adding that in, I think, makes the most sense because we always have to think about not just today, but how is that watershed gonna be protected as we go forward? And LJEA, which is Lake James Environmental, we're working towards that. So if we go to the next page, so we talk about the watershed. There's that lovely map there that's very difficult to read. But I think one of the reasons why it's so difficult is you can see how large that watershed really is. There's a lot of creeks and tributaries that are running into Lake James. And that watershed's almost two hundred fifty thousand acres, most of it being in McDowell County. Now, lots of water is running through and of course, from Lake James, it continues on through the Catawba Waterway chain. And over two million people downstream from Lake James depend on this water for drinking water. We're not doing that yet, although that may be coming soon because we've heard inklings of that for Marion. But that's one of the reasons why, we've gotta keep the water quality as pristine as possible. And of course, there's lots of recreational benefits, economic benefits, because this is a great resource for the county, and environmental benefits as well. Of course, there's always concerns, how's the water quality? How is it being maintained? Erosion is an issue, sedimentation, especially on the west side of the lake, and the turbidity, again, mostly on the west side of the lake. Trash is a really big issue, I mean, you see it on the roadways, but think about it, when we get storms, everything that's on the roadways is flowing into these tributaries and much of it ends up in Lake James. So we all need to think about that. Lake James Environmental also put out a watershed report in two thousand eighteen. I've included the URL here. It's a great resource. If you guys want to go out to just LJEA.org, there's links right there to the watershed report. It's a fabulous and extremely detailed report, gives you a lot of information. But it's really a big picture look at water quality in the lake and in the watershed and factors that influence water quality. Because we could talk about quality ad infinitum, but we really need to figure out what is it that's causing any issues? And then, next steps, how do we deal with it? How do we remediate? And honestly, I was thrilled to see that Lake James photographs and information about its importance as a resource were in the land use plan. And the public comments in that land use plan, if you looked on the back pages of that, quite a number of them really talked about maintaining the beauty, the environmental value, and Lake James is a great resource for the county. So public thinks it is as well, it's not just LJEA. So if you go to the next page, lots of activities and we have lots of accomplishments from Lake James Environmental. One of the biggest things that we do is involvement in education. We have a tremendous Kids in the Creek program. Some of you might have had children that had gone through the program. Because each year since, I think, two thousand seventeen, we've had at least seven hundred students in both Burke and McDowell County go through this program. That's a lot of kids. And it is award-winning at the state level, so it's a wonderful program. It's in, part of it's in classroom and part of it's in water. I mean, what kids don't want to go in the water and splash around and actually learn something while they're doing it? We have university partnerships, we have interns that we have and we cycle through them as they cycle out of college. We have also established the annual Lake James Watershed Symposium. We had the first one last year. We did have representation from both McDowell and Burke at that symposium, as well as people from all throughout the watershed. It's a tremendous, tremendous program, and we already talked about the state of the watershed report. Water quality monitoring and reporting and data collection. We do monthly sampling at over thirteen sites. Now, I don't know if any of you swim in Lake James, most people who do, they have the Swim Guide app on their phones. And if you don't, you should get it because it's really looking at the entire Catawba chain. And all of the data that's collected by volunteers throughout the chain, that's put into that Swim Guide app. And you can find out if there's contamination that you would want to say, no, I probably shouldn't swim tomorrow. It's once a week, they usually collect it on Thursdays, they immediately do the analysis, so I'm finding the data is updated. We're very fortunate that Lake James almost always is in the green. But as you look at it on the app, you'll see that there are places that might be yellow or red as you go down the chain. But it's so important for us to continue doing. We also do testing for macro invertebrates, chlorophyll, chemical, turbidity testing. Some of that's in the watershed report, but I really hope that at a future date, we'll be able to go into more depth with this group so that you can learn a lot more about what we've been up to and how it's so important that we keep up on this. We advocate with the public, local, state, and federal agencies, whether it be for wastewater treatment, wastewater discharge permitting, deforestation projects, all kinds of things we get involved in. And oftentimes, we meaning. We collaborate for sustainable development plans. We also have a new program doing ball eagle monitoring on Lake James, because there are some eagle nests that have been noted there. And we partnered with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on that, which was really great. And of course, trash, we talked a little bit about that. We do participate in the annual cleanups, McDowell County has them, Burke County has them, other organizations, and we do as well. Since two thousand eighteen, ten tons of trash have been pulled out of that lake. Ten tons? That's incredible, just incredible. And the trash trout, which we're gonna learn a little bit more about that. So if you go to the next slide, it's just a synopsis and picture, because I'm a very visual person, as to the things we just talked about. Obviously, the eagles and the kids in the creek. And on the lower right-hand corner, those little blue dots are signifying some of the areas where we are doing that water testing. So you can see it's really throughout that watershed. So let's go to the trash trout on the next slide. We have a partnership with Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation. And they do not only the Lake James watershed, but they go all the way down Catawba Watery. So they have a much broader, much, much broader scope. But we're partnering with them, we got a grant from the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina. And this trash trout was fabricated by Ashwell Greenworks. So everything has stayed local. And you can see on the picture, kinda, sorta, because it's not the best photograph, but an iPhone is an iPhone, right? So on the left-hand side would be upstream, the right-hand side would be downstream. So this is a collection device, so the arms kind of just filter everything into the device. Fish, organisms, all that stuff can flow right through, it's not impeding anything. And I know that was, but it's always gonna be a concern, will the fish re-change? No, it will not, not at all. But trash gets collected. This was installed on May sixteenth, so it's only been in for a few weeks and we've already gotten, I think, it was over thirty-two pounds of trash. Most of it being single-use plastics, most of it being Gatorade bottles. So somebody upstream is chugging and tossing, chugging and tossing. So there's a lot of Gatorade bottles if you're getting up to thirty-two pounds, think of it that way. And of course, as we collect them, we recycle them. But all those types of things, as they break down, create microplastics, which is something that's really bad for the lake or any waterway, to be honest with you. We did make the front page of the McDowell News when we installed this, so that was fabulous. And we do have some sponsors, Catawba Riverkeeper, Hillman Beer, because this is actually located, if you're in the parking lot behind Hillman, and if Hillman's on your left, it's a little bit to the right. So if you go down to the river, or the creek, Mill Creek, and just go to the right a little bit, you'll see it, it's right there. The G Five Trail Collective, thank you. Kate Spoh, Lake James Environmental, and of course, you have McDowell County question mark, and hopefully I can explain it's Monday and you'll know for sure, right? We plan to have signage on the shore, so our sponsors will be named on that signage and it'll be educational signage. And it's not just to educate kids, we've gotta get adults educated too. And oftentimes, we focus so much on kids and forget about the adults. So we're going to be doing both, there's no doubt about that. If we go to the next slide, there's a photograph there of the first cleanout of the unit after just a few days, where we already were starting to collect. I think the importance of this picture is you can see how deep the water is, because the people are standing in there, and it gives you kind of scale on size. So it's not that big, but it's already collecting all kinds of stuff. The other thing we do with the stuff we collect is we catalog it, so that we do know it's all Gatorade bottles or whatever it is that's coming in. And what is it that might be different, how are things changing? So we can then continue to address that. Let's see, we do contract to a third party to do the cleanout, because again, we're all volunteers and there's a limited amount of resources, which is why there's that annual cost. They'll be able to assist us with, thank you, again. And we've been meeting, we meeting Lake James Environmental and Catawba Riverkeeper. We've been meeting with county management as well as planning and they certainly have been supportive of this. So that's really wonderful. So let's go to the next slide, let's talk about what Lake James Environmental has to offer. We would, I know we've mentioned to Mr. Harmon that we would really like to collaborate with the planning department. We have a lot of resources and a lot of knowledge, as does the county, of course. But we would love to collaborate on developing more smart, sustainable, low-impact development plans and ordinances. We really appreciate the fact that we have the Lake James ordinance already in place. And you know, in order to get things tightened up or added to, we would love to be involved in that, because we have some great ideas. And we can pull into Catawba Riverkeeper Foundation as well. And again, thank you for that comprehensive land use plan that has information in that as well. The next thing that we would like to do, that we're offering, is involvement with McDowell County in the Lake James Watershed Symposium. They participated last year and this year, we really are trying to get people from the county to be presenters and to sit on panels. And we've already gotten commitment that the planning department will be involved in that, so that's fabulous. And we would relish any other opportunities. You guys may know of other things that we can do to help you out, because we really want to collaborate. So now the last page is the requests. County support for the trash trout, we've already decided that you'll be discussing that on Monday. But it's really for continued maintenance, cleanouts, doing the cataloging, so we can do some more research on that. We will market it on sign. We will market it on signage at the site and any marketing that we do about it. This will support research and education. It'll support protecting the valuable resource that we all have here, not just the lake but the entire watershed. And it will preserve, protect, and enhance the environment and the quality of life of the citizens here as well. And that's really the end game. Our other request is that we have more meetings like this, whether it's in this format, another format, that we do periodically update you on what Lake James Environmental is doing, how we might help each other to keep this resource as pristine as we possibly can. Because we have a lot to talk about. Because we could talk about Kids in the Creek, we could talk about the state of the watershed, we could talk about water quality, the university internship programs, how people can get involved, whether it be just volunteering for an event or an activity, or becoming a member, or being part of the leadership team. There's so much there. So, that's Lake James in a nutshell. Any questions?
I was just thinking, while we were talking, I guess I was just doing a lot of things to do, but it would seem that you could take, and you know more about this than I do, that you could take some kind of floating device, a cable on a floating device, and loop it around at the mouth of the rivers and streams and catch a lot of this floating debris.
You could. What you wouldn't be doing at that point is capturing it well enough so that you could really capture everything. These trash trout, they've been used extensively throughout, there's several of them in North Carolina, quite a few of them actually in South Carolina. And that's the best way to collect because it's like a big cage so that as you get more than just a few things, it's not going to go over the boom because you're talking more of like a boom-type system. It won't go over the boom or under and sneak under. We also have to think about, there are storms, sometimes trees end up in there, and we don't want to clog up the body of water either.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I want to mention some of the sponsors that you've got there. I'm very interested in learning more about Catawba Riverkeeper, but I do know Hillman Beer, G5 Trail Collective, and Kitspo are very strong community leaders in Old Fort in trash pickups and stuff like this. And sometimes, I live in Old Fort, and about six weeks ago, Kitspo had a trash pickup in the community of Crooked Creek, and it was amazing. They probably had 60 or 70 volunteers picking up trash, and it's, they are leaders, and I'm very excited about what you all are doing, trying to keep it clean. I do think that we do have an issue with trash in this county, not just in the waterways, but in the ditches, which will end up in the waterways. So, I think that this is, it's a good place to start and it's encouraging to know that we're green most of the time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, thank you. Moving on, the Harold Siegel is not here, you said.
Right, so let's get down.
Okay, under ordinance, we got out of May, the animal service control. Data.
So, I think it was, Mr. Chairman, back in January, I believe, that you had an update from Mr. Kepoyster and Ms. Wright, who is the Animal Services Director, about just how things are going with the Animal Services section, which was in Public Services, which is now in the Standalone Department, and which is mostly under her direction, is most of the shelter. At that time, you indicated you would like to have more of a workshop or discussion with relevant parties, so we did have that a couple of weeks ago. And attendance was Ms. Wright representing Animal Services, also represented with Sheriff Buchanan. He brought several staff members that are directly involved with enforcement of our current Animal Patrol Ordinance. And maybe most importantly, you did have representatives from three of the advocacy groups in the county to, again, just have a conversation about shared experiences as it relates to animal welfare in the county. The takeaways that seem to be, and again, Mr. Ellison and yourself, of course, were at that meeting, but staff's takeaways, and maybe a little bit different, were that there were really three focus areas and maybe some areas that didn't really fit in buckets per se, but to really wanted to continue to talk about. There's a heavy discussion of education. There's only so much time in a day and so many staff, but on the county level and the advocate level to, and Sheriff's Office, the ability to continue education through different media, whether it's social media, newspaper, talks at civic groups, schools, et cetera, about why it's important to take care of own animals, including spandear, including rabies, those sorts of things. So, a big focus on education, and that's a part that as a county organization, we can definitely focus on with Ms. Wright and her staff. There was a lot of discussion about enforcement. Again, the Sheriff's Office is responsible for the enforcement of the existing ordinance. He does have a, what he will call, an ordinance enforcement officer, but he, as he noted that evening, every deputy on his payroll is also responsible for enforcement of all the other county ordinances, including this one. And so, there was some discussion that the current ordinance is about 10 years old, and it's been quite a while since it's had a really good focus and a look by staff and the planning board. So, there was a discussion at that meeting about having that brought forward tonight for perhaps direction to go to the planning board. Some of the things that were talked about, a current concern from different people at that meeting, so maybe not 100% from everyone, but just that were shared. Certain places in the county, there seems to be perhaps an issue with own animals staying on property. So, where there's maybe especially dogs roaming around in certain areas, that was expressed as a concern to look at perhaps in the ordinance. There were comments about licensing. Some counties and a lot of cities do pet licensing. It's not something that we've ever tackled. We used to have a dog tax years ago. They currently do licensing. And there was quite a bit of discussion about abandonment. We do have some language in the current ordinance, but maybe looking at that, if that should be tightened, where folks will perhaps purposely abandon an animal, maybe an advocate's house, maybe just out on the street or somewhere to where they're trying perhaps to remove the burden to themselves and increase the burden to someone else. So, there are probably other comments that aren't included in that, but that was the discussion to bring back to.
I'd like to, here, motion for the board to send this to the planning board and let them come back with a presentation to us on something that would touch them on his own, we mentioned your name.
I want to get a motion.
Good.
Second.
Motion second, end of discussion.
So, to be clear, when this goes to the planning board, Ash, you're going to have them look at a lease law, some kind of lease?
That will be one of the issues.
All right.
More discussion.
A fee for discussions, a fee for having an animal, possibility for discussion. Anything else?
The adoption fee.
Adoption fees.
But that, I would pull that out separately.
The adoption fees are going to be...
You were talking about the licensing.
Yeah, because they, because we've had in the past, they say, they want the board to be very specific, you know, in direction and writing so they know what they're working on.
Things that I, that I have heard at that evening, and there may be something that Mr. Harmon called, but maintaining animal's property, licensing, and the abandonment.
Okay, good. A motion second, all in agreement, say aye? Any votes?
And I will mention, if it's okay to wrap up here, there were, was quite a bit of discussion from Ms. Wright and others about the current shelter, which we've talked about in this, maybe in the prior board, about the shelter which is built, opened around 1982. It's not experienced, has experienced renovations since then, of course, but not expansion. Prior board did authorize examination of how it could be expanded, and so we have had some difficulty reaching out to an architect, and so we have some renewed effort there. You can bring that information to a future meeting. Back at that, to Mr. Ellison's point about the fees, you did have requests back at the January meeting for you to consider. You see Ms. Wright's email again, effective, we like a month's notice, so maybe August 1st. If you're so inclined to increase our, some of our fees, the dog adoption to go from 65 to 100. So, right now, we do a lot more than we ever did because it relates to animal care. So, you're getting for that spandear, you're getting heartworm tests, all the different lists of that. And that's done ahead of time now. It's not done after adoption. So, there's no excuse. And so, you do see the different fees there that she's requested and recommended for people.
And Mr. Wood, are these assisted with other counties?
Yes, sir. We did have staff look at these, and they're actually still lower than the county, what is surrounding counties.
I'll make a motion to accept the increase from 65 to $100 for the dogs, and as they are listed on, as they present, the, make those effective August 1st.
Second.
Okay, a motion second, end of discussion. All the papers say aye? Any votes? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wood, also on the building. So, we do know that our architect is backed up right now in one of these currently, and we do have a generous donation sitting there for the expansion of the animal potential. So, would it be beneficial to try to contact other architects?
And we have been a little bit on the formal level just to see who maybe works in that area. So, we're looking at that, sir.
We have space where it's currently located to increase that.
Next item intended, B, the social media policy, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Last month, you heard a presentation about a proposed social media policy for accounts that are representing county departments, and this isn't about private use. And so, would ask that you approve that tonight.
Make motion, we pre, that's what's in it.
Second.
Motion second, end of discussion. All the papers say aye? Any votes?
Now, well known, Mr. Chairman, you did ask your direct staff to look at the other policies in the manual, and we are doing that. We like...
Thank you. Next, under I see, it's the broadband expansion. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Just a few updates I thought you'd be interested in. Mentioned for quite a few months now that the incumbent providers in the county, the inspectorment and optimum, had indicated to myself that they were going to apply for the great grant, which is $350 million that the General Assembly set aside for broadband expansion. So, they did do that, of course, as I indicated. Also, Frontier Communications submitted an application as well, which is somewhat of a surprise, but welcome surprise. So, tried to get a hard date on the award notification from the state, wasn't able to do that. Right now, they are going through what they call a challenge period, and so competing entities can go through the address list that have been presented and say, well, actually, we provide service there. You can't be awarded funding to overbuild us. So, this grant isn't set up to provide competition, it's set up to provide service. So, if there's already 25 or three service at those addresses, it'll be rejected. So, also previously mentioned, the completing access to broadband grant, which has cab. This is, the state has announced, and it's been in the budget, they've announced a little bit of detail, that the program dates and application information have not been announced yet because the purpose of that is to sort of backfill areas that are not being served with the great grant. So, definitely, we'll keep this on our radar. This is more of a direct county partnership between the state and the counties on this one even more so than the great. So, stay on top of that. And just another bit of information, Mr. Ayers here is here from Fiddles Regional Commission. Appreciate his support on the comprehensive land use plan, but also this item, the digital inclusion plan, this is in partnership with Dogwood Health Trust, Institute for Urgent Issues, which is based in NC State, and also Fiddles. They're working on a plan that will implement strategies to ensure there's expanded access to broadband in the county. And one of the areas we've heard about before, this will hope, hopefully help address, is sometimes there is a line running by a house, but maybe the pricing is out of reach for the folks that live there. So, part of this is to help with identifying resources that can help these folks. So, again, just informational right now, but wanted to make sure you're on top of it. There's some information.
Just Chairman, one thing to say, the million dollars that the board dedicated to be used as far as a match, the provider said would generate 14 million dollars worth of investment by the providers into the killing. So, I think it's very important the board had the foresight and wisdom to go ahead and set aside a million dollars to be used to leverage more funding, 14,000 more funding to the county for our people so we can cover areas not covered.
True, that's a good point. Give us a bill of rights update, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Guys, I need to use really quickly, and it's getting late for everybody. Several building projects underway. Couple of months ago, you authorized seeking an engineer to develop a multi-year plan for paving rehabilitation for county-owned parking lots and driveways. So, staff has gone through the process to select the most qualified engineer and is developing a scope and a contract. We'll bring it back to you. The idea with this is to find someone that knows what they're doing in this world and to not just say, all right, here, do all this all at one time, but give us the plan that we can follow over a couple of years. The next item...
With that, before you go on to the next item, Mark Garrett just kind of reminded me, there are a few different schools in the county, and I know that we're not over the schools, but can you work with him or the senior people that are going to be left in charge because of the high school and different places that need to be so that if we could partner with them, they would be covering the cost for the high school, we'd be covering the cost of our lots? Could that be done?
It could be. I do know you have an amendment later where two of the schools are going to be paid this summer based on some work they've been doing. So, we can look for a collaboration.
And Mr. Wood, engineers are looking at our convenience center sites too.
They will look at every site, lose count, but it was at least 18, I think, maybe 25 sites. The convenience sites, driveways, roads like one of the Maple Leaf that are pretty bad shape, so if it's got asphalt on it, it's going to be looked at. Yes, sir. Good question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood.
The next item, just quickly, there's RFQ out for the proposed renovation of the Services Building. You'll recall that we received state funding for at least part of that. And so, again, we'll bring back a firm for your consideration in a future meeting. In that station one, that was on Garden Street, the remaining contents are being emptied out, and so we are disconnected utilities, and we will, probably in the new budget year, look for the demolition of that facility. Anything of value that will be removed, of course.
The engineer also will look at that site in conjunction with the city and county partnering on... on the project to pay that, because the city and county committed together on the current lot. So it's good to have friends in the city who recognize the benefits of joint projects together.
Partnerships.
So we'll make them aware to get that part down below.
And the last item, Mr. Chairman, flooring and painting are underway at DSS, and so every office and the hallways and everything will have new carpet and painting is taking place over the next couple of months there.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you for that. Parks and Recreation Projects, updated now.
Again, more updates, but want to make sure you're aware of all the good things going on, of course. So you know, of course, the shooting range opened to the public on May 4th. We have had some window dressing items, continuing to be worked on by the contractor, but it is open and being enjoyed, and more and more people across the region are talking about it, and they're getting busier and busier, especially on Saturdays, that's what you would like. I do note that Wildlife Staff is putting together a grant application for the road paving, for the park, for the bridge up to the site, so that is a process they have to go through, they apply for federal funding for the ninety percent of share, and then you've previously indicated you would cover the ten percent.
Would that be possibly done in the coming fiscal year?
Probably with the timing, I think it would take some time. Recreation Center, this is the Academy Street site. Holland and Hamrick has had ongoing discussions and site visits with the Parks and Recreation staff. I've contacted the lead architect and asked to set up a meeting very soon to go over where that stands. We'll let you know available dates. You previously directed at a playground and picnic shelter project be initiated in Maple Leaf. The site where the improvements will go is where the process of getting quotes to clear that site, and do some light grading there. Previously noted, we did apply for a Kubota on Town Program Grant. Staff is working on a T-Mobile grant, a total of those two is about a hundred and fifty thousand. And there's a state playground grant that we hope to apply for, I believe, applications soon, September, October, so we're working on that as well.
Real quick, a town, so we do know the place for that date, but as far as, we'll note on the Kubota grant this month, right?
I think July.
July, I mean, July, right. And the T-Mobile is fall. So what's the estimated that timetable, because we've been talking about this for over a year now?
Right. The hope would be that we get the grants, if not, you have identified funding to go ahead and get started with the work. So the Plan B would be to use the rescue plan funds that you've identified, and use that for the site preparation. And there appears to be enough to do a nice site, and perhaps one shelter out of that work, and maybe two, and then still have hope with the playground grant to come after that. So maybe more of a multi-phased approach. So if the grants aren't accepted, then we'll go to Plan B. And then Black Bear Park, the last item, this is the site out by the Black Bear Boat Launch on the North Island Chain. Contractors have been hired, New Energy are working with the day use area and the campground, and Mr. Marsh and his staff go do site visits as they're allowed. We have been told there will be a lease document in front of you, probably in August, and that site should be completed around the end of the year. First one, next to you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. All right, new business, I'd make, we go to Carson House Resolution on support, you have that?
Yes, sir. You have a resolution support that has been forwarded to you by the Board of Directors. They are applying for state funding and ask to approve this in support of their efforts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd commission approve the resolution support as was in.
Second.
Good motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Thank you. Next item is the B, the G5 Trail Grant Request, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Jason McDougall, representing the G5 Trail Initiative, had reached out. There is interest in applying for a division of water resources grant from the state of no more than two hundred thousand dollars to assist with some of the trailhead work they're doing there off Curtis Creek. He has indicated that they are working with Dogwood Health Trust to do the grant application documents itself, so we don't have to do that. If the grant is awarded, the county would be the fiscal agent to pass through, would be work for staff, of course, but hopefully okay enough for the gain it needs from the county.
I'll make a motion if they get the grant, that we do the fiscal agent as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any votes? Okay. Mr. Wood, administrative items.
So, yes, sir, you do have the administrative items in addition to the bulletproof pass item that was added earlier. I could go through each if you would like.
The, we do have, we do have, there are these sort of items, a big amendment that probably has been talked about for self insurance fund.
Yes, GF forty-five, that is an amendment that would transfer resources from other line items, either through existing line items where unfilled positions or salarying benefit or revenue above budget to cover our anticipated needs for the Self-Returnal Fund.
Make a motion, approve, as was in.
Second.
Got a motion, and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any votes? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Okay, next is tax matters, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. You do have releases, rebills, and you have a couple of write-offs from this on your front.
Make a motion to approve the releases and rebills, and the write-offs as was in.
Second.
Motion second, any comments? All in favor, say aye? Aye. Any votes? Okay. Next, under our B, is Board Form, it's Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have two vacancies on the McDowell Tech Port Trustees. I put a ballot sheet up to each one of you. We have five applications from Lisa Morgan, Kenneth Day, Brenda Vaughn, Chad Marsh, and Brian Pearson. This is the second reading, and we can vote for two. I can vote for Kelly.
Make a motion, allow Brenda not to vote on this, since she is a firefunded position.
Sir.
Also, the Health Department Director has named Sherry Bright as her designated on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and you need to approve that appointment.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve her not voting, so all in favor of that, say aye? Aye. Okay. And Sherry Bright, do we need a motion on that to approve her?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, citizen comments, Madam Clerk, any other?
I can give you the balance. I can give you both.
Okay, yeah, give us the vote.
Okay, is four to zero for Brenda Vaughn and Chad Marsh to serve on the McDowell Tech Port Trustees.
Okay, thank you.
And we do not have anyone signed up, what are your citizen comment?
Okay. Mr. Staff, a vote, too, thank you.
This time.
Okay. Before we adjourn, we're going to go into closed session pursuant to NCTS one four three dash three one eight dot one one six. Motion.
Motion, go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And we will adjourn in after that.
What was the purpose? Personally.
Question I want. Fair motion, we go out of closed session.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye? Aye. Okay. One other thing tonight that we're going to mention, we welcome Ms. Victoria Craig here tonight, and by consensus, the board has, we have interviewed her in to fill the vacancy that's going to be created by Cheryl, part of the board, and she has chosen to retire on us, and so we have looked at that, and the one that seems to be the best fit for this board is Ms. Victoria Craig, if we could, if I could, well, pardon that, and not to hear the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to accept Victoria Craig's employment effective July 1st.
Second.
And be trained specifically of Ms. Cheryl through the fifteen calls.
In a second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. Any votes? There you are. Ms. Craig, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So here, motion, adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye? Aye.